Good morning and welcome to the August 28th, 2024 City Council Meeting. We will begin with the invocation from Councilman Nichols, followed by the pledge. If you'll please stand.
That's great. Dear Lady Father, thank you for this beautiful day you give us, Lord. Thank you for all this weather that we've had this year. Some's been a little bad, some of it's great, but we're thankful for the rain and everything that has yielded in your beauty from that. Well, we thank you for everyone here today, everyone here in service, everyone that serves in our city government, our first responders, and all of our employees, Lord. We're just thankful for their servant's heart and their willingness to step forward. Thank you for the people here that are here today in this meeting that are here to participate, Lord. We're thankful for their interest and their concern for the city of Tyler, and we're just thankful for everything you do for us. In Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we'll begin with the minutes from June 9th, 2024.
Move to approve.
Second. Got a motion by Wynn, second by Haney. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, we're going to come down for some awards.
All right, we've got five people who represent A, and they represent 135 years of service to the city. First, we have James Holt, police officer, 30 years of service. All right, next we have Lance Parks, police officer, 30 years of service. Next we have Theophilus Ross, Streets Crew Leader, 25 years of service. Those people you work with out there? I come here not to work. And next we have Michael Schaub, wastewater treatment superintendent, 20 years of service. You know, 135 years of service is a lot of time, and so we appreciate the dedication and the loyalty to the city. The other day I went to train and ended up service award, read a proclamation for a guy that had been there 50 years. So we hope these people that have been here 20, 30, will make it to 50. So glad you're here, thanks for what you do.
Good morning, Mayor Council. The first zoning case we have is a request from RPO, restricted professional office district to R22 family residential district. This is on South Spring Avenue in District 2. The applicant's requesting the zone change to allow the existing duplex on the property to be in conformance with the code and allow the property to be rehabilitated back into a duplex that has sat vacant for a number of years. And so they are planning to rehabilitate that structure, bring it back into use. The property was built in 1930, and then at some point converted into a duplex, but I believe it's a stacked duplex, one on top of each other. As you see, the surrounding properties are zoned RPO and C2, which are, and the C2 is of various retail uses. RPO is, those properties are developed with a mixture of single-family homes, duplexes, and some office space as well. It's, that street there is a variety of uses, and so this would bring the residential use back to, into existence here. The request would amend the future land use guide to single-family and single-family attached medium-high density is for that, again, the duplexes you see here. And again, it's from the '30s, and I believe there's a unit on top of the bottom unit. Of the notices that were sent out to neighbors, zero were returned in favor or in opposition to the request, and the plan of commission by a 5-0 vote recommended approval.
Any questions for Kyle?
Second.
Got a motion by Hawkins, second by Wynn. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Z2.
This is a zone change request from M1 Light Industrial District to PMXD1 Plan Mixed Use District on West Irwin Street. For these two properties here, there is an existing retail building on the property. I believe there are, there is office space on top, so it's a two-story building. And the applicant's requesting the change to allow the top area, the kind of the lot area, to be used for residential uses. The surrounding properties in the area are M1 Light Industrial District. They are, however, developed with a variety of commercial uses, some heavier than others, but retail, commercial uses. And then to the north, there is residential, there's a residential neighborhood to the north. This request would amend the future land use guide from neighborhood commercial to mixed use because it is adding the residential component. The property is located within the north end planning area, so adding the ability to have additional housing units in this area is consistent with the Tyler First Conference and Plan. And allowing for that, that root, or that second story, or second floor residential would be, provide some additional housing types for people looking for housing. So as you see here, the, it is an older structure, as you see there, the two stories. Parking, they do have the lot to the east there that they will utilize for parking. There's also some head-in parking off West Irwin Street. And of the notices we send out to the adjoining properties are within 200 feet. We did receive one in opposition, as you see there in red, with the protest calculation just over 5%. Their concern was adding residences, adding people to the area where there is existing commercial activity, which is typical when you have, have this type of request for mixed use developments. And I will note that the other commercial properties did not return any, any opposition to the request, but we did receive one for that reason. The plan of commission reviewed the request and voted, or recommended approval by a three to two vote.
Can you go back to the map that shows the zone? You know, when you, when you have M1 all the way around the residential, and then you've got a residential on M1, you can have a concrete plant, you can have all kinds of stuff that's loud, and then you're going to have a residence in the middle of it. And we dealt with this out by TruVines, we dealt with it out by Carrier, and, and so I struggle with it somewhat. You know, I don't know that the laws with fire, I know Chief Cubble does, but if you got the retail on the bottom and residential on top, does that require sprinkling in cases of fire? So I, I struggle with it somewhat. Any other comments for Kyle? Let me ask you this, is the applicant here? Advocate's not here.
Kyle, during PNC, passing by three to two vote, what was the commentary from the members that voted against this? Was it similar to what the mayor's expressing?
Yeah, I believe so. We did, one of the commissioners mentioned that, you know, the area is, you know, commercial, it's a more heavy commercial area, and so they didn't think at this time that was, you know, prudent to make, to add residences to it, so similar to your, your thoughts there.
Any other questions for Kyle? This is when it's a good time for the applicant to be present. I want to plan a motion, one way or the other.
I move to approve.
Got a motion. Do we have a second to approve?
Second.
All right, we got a motion from Nichols, second by Hawkins. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
I'm sorry, I didn't.
Opposed.
Opposed.
Two opposed.
No, three opposed.
Three opposed and two for. So motion fails. All right, Z3.
Okay, finally, we do have a request here for a special use permit for Town Square Media on Brookside Drive. The initial request is for a 150-foot radio tower on the property that had, or the recommendation is not 150 feet, but I'll get into that. So the property is developed with, with a radio station, and in the windstorms we had back in June, the existing 80-foot tower was destroyed, it fell over, and it was on the north side of the building. And so the applicant did request to add a new tower to, to replace that on the property as a broadcast tower, not a cell tower. And so they, they did request to have a taller building, but they, I believe they are understanding that one that fits a little bit better with the aesthetic of the area is preferred. As you see, the surrounding properties are for office uses, and they are generally developed as such. Here's the radio station on the property, and I guess it's just a picture of it, but they, they do propose to place the new broadcast tower at the location there in red, which, and limited to 80 feet, which is similar to what they had before. The previous location, you can kind of see the shadow on the north side of the building, that's where it was, which was closer to other businesses. The proposed location in red is at least 80 feet from any other building, so it's actually a better, I guess, if the, if the tower fell, you know, straight down, like typically they don't, but if they did, it wouldn't affect any other property, so that's, that's preferred. The plan of commission, they, they did have some public feedback on that. As you see here, we, we did receive quite a bit of opposition, but a lot of that was in regards to a 150-foot tower located at the hard corner of Brookside and Ncheli. But that has since changed. The plan of commission by a 5-0 vote recommended approval of the special use permit for 80-foot tower, broadcast tower located in that area on red, in red.
All right, any questions for Kyle?
Kyle, this has been in discussions for a while, and when we look at that protest calculation map, there's a lot of red. Can you explain the discussions that this group has had with those neighbors to alleviate some of those concerns and some of those agreements that they have reached?
I, I'm not, I'm not aware of all the conversations that they may have had individually, but I believe they, some of the concerns were related to the location and then the height, mostly the height. And they, they had kind of worked to find a height that they can work with, and the neighbors seemed to be in agreement with that as long as it was in that location there, because that seemed to be the best fit. It seems like the solution here that's been being recommended works for all, all the parties, can't speak for all of them, but the other concerns were related to the likelihood of lightning strikes, you know, with a tower in the area. With it being the same height as before, you know, wouldn't introduce any increased risk to that. Plus, new technology allows for, you know, lightning dissipators and things like that that may have not been on the previous tower. So my understanding is that those concerns have been addressed, but I'm not aware if anybody's here to speak to that.
With, hold on, I'll go one more question. With those concerns that were addressed, can we change the language and what's being requested to that agreement of 80 feet, because it says 150 feet?
Right.
So if we change it to what they've agreed on, is that going to limit anything where we say, okay, y'all have agreed on 80, y'all have agreed at the same height, we'll put that language in the special use permit instead of saying up to 150 feet?
Right.
Because I don't want somebody then to go back and say, well, we were allowed up to 150 feet, I know we have this agreement, but we can do what we are allowed to do. I don't want any problems like that down the road.
Well, the special use permit is conditional, and so the, the height limitation is placed, is established by city council. So they may have private, you know, agreements or thoughts, but the ordinance will say up to 80 feet, and that would be the recommendation of the plan of commission and of staff.
Okay. Kyle, my only question is, the original tower, do we know when it was built? And the new one going to be the same height, probably different wind requirements now for the construction of it?
Yeah, I believe it may have been, may have been in the 80s at some point. Could have been prior to that. There were some cases, there were some requests in the past, back in the late 90s and in the 80s as well to increase the height, so it seems to suggest there might have been a tower there at that point.
Do they have anybody here?
Pardon me?
Do they have anyone here? The Town Square Media?
Yes, they do.
Oh, okay.
He may have the answer to that, but he can probably speak to what?
Construction requirements.
Structurally, I would say it's probably improved over a period of time.
Any other questions? I say we have the applicant here, right? Do we have, there is a lot of protests. Is there anyone, I don't have any cards, but is there anyone that's opposed to this that's here present that wishes to speak? Okay.
I make a motion to approve with the amendment of stating up to 80 feet instead of the up to 150 feet.
The ordinance currently has, it only references 80 feet, so it's, that's already, that's existed at ordinance. Also, we did mention it, but this is, because of the amount of protests, this will need a supermajority, so we'll need at least four affirmative votes for this to pass.
All right, so we got a motion from Haney.
Second.
Got a second from Wynn. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Kyle.
Mayor Warren, City Council, we're presenting, we presented this budget to you on August 14th. It serves as a roadmap for the next 12 months based on our past experiences and future forecasts. This year, we build on our past progress by finding efficiency, streamlining services, and investing heavily in capital projects to benefit all of Tyler. Before we open for the public hearing, I want to briefly review our proposal. In our public safety departments, we are making substantial investments in advanced equipment and training. For our Tier 1 fire department, we're authorized the purchase of a new fire engine and ladder truck, with financing plans in place to lock in current costs and minimize future expenses. Additionally, our budget includes the acquisition of a Class A burn building for in-house training and specialized equipment to enable participation for the Texas Interstate Fire Mutual Aid System, TIFMS. We're also planning to acquire property for a new regional fire training facility and to construct a new fire station number two. For the police department, we are converting the old National Guard armory into a regional training facility, a $1.3 million project that will enhance officer preparedness. We're continuing the Axon program to ensure officers have up-to-date equipment, upgrading patrol car communication systems, and improving connectivity at Tyler PD gun range. We also plan to hire two new police officers for the downtown beat, pending grant approval. At the animal shelter, we are upgrading kennels to improve conditions and increase capacity. Additionally, we're funding the demolition of substandard commercial structures to enhance community safety, aesthetics, and economic development. Those initiatives underscore our commitment to public safety and the well-being of our community. We're excited to kick off Phase 1 of our downtown improvement projects, investing $25.7 million over the next three years. Starting with a $10.3 million contribution from the Half-Cent Fund in fiscal year 2025, the west side of the square will see expanded green spaces and right-of-way improvements, all while keeping streets open. These changes will boost tourism, improve walkability, support local businesses, and enhance public safety, creating a vibrant and economically strong downtown. This year, we'll complete the trailhead for legacy trails at Stewart Park, enhancing connectivity across Tyler. With $775,000 allocated for park improvements, including landscaping, restrooms, and signage, we aim to make the trails more accessible and inviting. We're also investing in better resource management with new equipment to streamline debris removal and improve park maintenance. As part of the ongoing Rose Complex upgrades, we'll enhance the Tyler Rose Garden by replacing old borders with stamped concrete and hiring a horticulturist to maintain its 30,000 rose bushes, ensuring the garden remains one of the nation's largest and most beautiful. Lastly, with the East Texas State Fair moving to a new location, we will begin demolishing the outdated fairground facilities to make way for future improvements aligned with our vision for the area. We're enhancing our infrastructure and services with strategic personnel adjustments and targeted investments. By reallocating a vacant Brick Street crew leader position, we're adding a crew leader to our tree crew at no extra cost. Meanwhile, $869,772 from the Street Improvement Fund will go towards rehabilitating our historic brick streets with continued brick street repairs supported by local contractors. Additionally, we're upgrading four laborer positions to semi-skilled roles to improve hiring and retention, contributing to approximately $1.4 million in preventive street maintenance and $14.5 million from the Half-Cent Sales Tax Fund for roadway improvements. On the traffic side, we're converting a vacant position into administrative coordinator to boost efficiency and increase funding for traffic signal maintenance as part of our 10-year Intelligent Traffic System Plan. Tyler Water Utilities is investing in safety, security, and customer service with new equipment and software, including the Tenable Skada for cybersecurity and Boomerang messaging for secure customer updates. Our $50 million investment in capital water and wastewater projects includes a $3.4 million federal grant to kickstart water meter replacements with an additional $1 million to replace 11,000 meters next year. Other key projects include evaluating taste and odor technology at the Lake Palestine Water Treatment Plant, adding and upgrading storage tanks, and replacing outdated water lines. We're also initiating a stormwater project to prepare for emergencies, including adding a stormwater compliance technician and converting an existing position to an administrative assistant. These efforts focus on improving culverts, drainage, and setting aside funds for emergency repairs, ensuring our city's resilience and preparedness. These initiatives reflect our commitment to maintaining and improving Tyler's infrastructure while preparing for future challenges. We are laying the groundwork for a thriving community that honors our past and embraces the future by updating Tyler's comprehensive plan and conducting a historic resource survey. The fiscal year 2025 budget includes funding for the first year of this multi-year process, which will involve community input, trend assessment, and future land use planning to create a shared vision of Tyler. The Historic Resources Survey will document Tyler's historic sites, providing crucial data for preservation efforts. In addition, we are proposing changes to our building services fees, including shifting to a flat $5 fee per $1,000 valuation for commercial permits and increasing zoning and variance application fees by $150 to cover rising costs of required public notices. These initiatives are essential for shaping a vibrant, sustainable, and resilient future of Tyler. In 2025, we move forward with the second phase of the 2023 Compensation Plan that will ensure non-civil service employees are within 10% of market rate for their positions. All civil service employees were brought to 100% of their market rate last year as part of Phase 1. We aim to keep our talent and attract the best as we recruit for vacancies. To do that, we will offer a 3% base pay increase to civil service staff, and our non-civil service staff will receive up to a 3% base pay increase determined by annual performance We are proposing a property tax rate of $24.0085 per $100 valuation, down from the $24.792. Despite the lower rate, overall tax revenue will increase due to a 10% growth in property values, contributing $30.5 million to the fiscal year 2025 General Fund, 32% of the general budget. This $1.7 million increase will support city services, though property taxes still only cover 80% of the Tyler Police Department's funding needs. Sales tax remains the primary revenue source for the General Fund, supporting essential services like police, fire, parks, and more. Given the limitation of property tax revenue, we are pursuing additional funding sources, including franchise fees and grants. We are also introducing a $50 commercial safe fire safety inspection fee to help businesses identify fire hazards and familiarizing our firefighters with building layouts. Additionally, we propose restructuring the park's special event permit fee, moving from a flat $50 fee to a tiered system ranging from $50 to $300 based on the event's scale. To promote water conservation, Texas has encouraged a shift to a flat volumetric rate structure, which we will begin, which we began implementing in 2023. With Phase 2 completed, Phase 3 will roll out in 2025, ensuring that each gallon of water costs the same for every customer. To support our $50 million investment in water and sewer improvements, we propose increasing the water base rate by $2.50 and the sewer base rate by $4.30 for most residential properties, with variable increases based on meter size. Volumetric rates will also rise, leading to a $19.06 monthly increase for the average residential customer using 8,000 gallons of water. The regulatory compliance fee will remain unchanged at $19.70, covering the $250 million cost related to the EPA consent decree on the wastewater system. We are also proposing a CPI increase of 4% to our solid waste rates. This would increase the residential waste collection bill by 91 cents. For our approximately 31,000 customers, we offer premium services with twice-weekly collections at low monthly rates. For our solid waste staff, consistently receive high remarks and citizen surveys, delivering top-rated service and demonstrating their commitment to outstanding customer care. Due to the fire at the Rivers Recycling Center last, or this year, we do not anticipate curbside recycling returning for at least a year. These customers that participate in this service will remain on the list but will not be billed. Citizens who wish to continue recycling can bring their recycling to the Citizens who wish to continue recycling can bring their recycling to the Tyler Recycling Center on Bodark. As per the budget and tax rate adoption schedule for state statutes, the council's only action today is conducting a public hearing. As a reminder, our second public hearing will take place at your next meeting on September 11th. After the hearing on September 11th, we will bring the tax rate and budget to the council for adoption. Thank you for the opportunity this morning to go over the highlights in the proposed budget for fiscal year 2025 programs and services.
All right, any questions, Red, before we move into public hearing?
I've got one question for him. Ed, would you mind explaining the public notice cost relating to the planning and zoning? You and I have talked about that before, and people may not be aware of what all the city has to do and where that's published and why there's the cost.
Thank you. So, yes, on the planning and zoning, and just as the zoning items you consider today, the state of Texas has different requirements that are in place that we have to, as far as abide by. So for each of the zoning requirements you had today as a consideration, we had to have signs placed, so people have notifications, we had to mail out notifications to the surrounding property owners. And then also with that, though, we have to publish notifications in the newspaper, and that is a state requirement. And so whether people are reading the newspapers or not, but there is still that requirement that we have. And as newspapers try to make sure that they have revenue to come in to continue to support their operations, those costs have increased also. And so we want to make sure that the true cost of the notification process, especially in relationship to the increased costs that have been borne by us in relationship to notifications in the newspaper, are essentially carried and covered by the people doing the applications.
Any other questions, Fred? All right. We are going to move into a public hearing at this point, and the first person I will call up is Michael Clayhorn. Hope I got your name right. You'll just state your name and address for the record.
Michael Clayhorn, 3302 Shady Cove Circle. I live in the woods edition. Mayor, Council, Mr. City Manager, appreciate the presentation on the budget. As the council is well aware, this is the most important planning document that this body can make. Therefore, it's important that the discussion on the budget is robust and that it serves ultimately as a report card to the community with outcomes that must ensure that the fiduciary responsibility is both physically and responsibly spent in the most efficient manner possible. The fiscal year 2020, excuse me, 2020-25 budget of $255 million is 6% more than last year in stark contrast to the CPI for most people, which will most likely be 2.5%. In the past five years, I applaud the city for addressing infrastructure needs. God, we all know that a lot of that stuff has not been repaired and looked at over decades. However, the water rates have increased, if my numbers are correct, over 60% in the past five years. Now, that might not seem like a lot, but a $19.06 increase for family with a budget of 50,000 is a heck of a lot more detriment to their budget than one for a family of Water replacements, water meter replacements and associated water meters, I get it. You know, whether they're mechanically red or they're sonically red, whether they're census meters or whether they're Neptune meters, water meters do need to be replaced. They have a life cycle and they do expire. However, the manager mentioned new technologies to improve resources for public servants, enhance citizens' quality of life. Could we get specific details on these technologies and their benefits? How will it progress? What kind of cost savings should we expect to see? And how will those efficiencies be measured? What metrics or key performance indicators will be used to track success? Because if it's not measured, there's no way it will improve. Finally, regarding the overall operating costs for increases in 2025 budget, what methodology was used to justify, as the manager mentioned, a 4% CPI increase for solid waste as it's currently predicted for seniors or people on Social Security, a 2.5% CPI? Now, there are many ways to do it. There's the Consumer Price Index, but there's also a tool called the Municipal Cost Index, which comprises the Construction Cost Index, the Product Producers Index, and the Consumer Price Index. And those all combined come out to a little over 2%. So it's quite concerning to watch a budget where utility rates increase over 60% over five years and a one incremental jump of $20 for 8,000 gallons of water use for a typical family. Mayor and Council, I urge you to consider this budget carefully. It's the most important decision you will make this year, and the impact will be felt by every citizen of Tyler. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Clayhorn. Appreciate you. Now, I also have a card here, and I'm not sure if it's on this item or a different item. Peyton Williams, is that this item or something?
Just a draw on the card.
We don't have any.
I can make it off the page.
Come up and, I mean, we're talking about the budget. This is probably a good time to, the budget's pretty all-encompassing. Name an address for the record.
Awesome. Peyton Williams, 7504 Holly Oak Drive, Tyler, Texas. Thank you all for being here. Definitely appreciate what you do. I know that national and state politicians get all the headlines, but you guys do make all the changes that affect people's day-to-day life. So the reason they actually brought me here today was representing Tyler YMB. So, yes, in my backyard, let's build more housing. And regarding the budget, it does come up that you guys are approving zoning changes. We've got to send out notifications. We've got to make different applications where somebody has to show up, somebody has to show up at 9 o'clock on a Wednesday, whenever they might be at work, to get that notification changed. And so I just wanted to advocate for some zoning changes that would reduce the number of applications that people actually have to make and let people have more property freedoms to build in Tyler and keep those prices down. As the past speaker mentioned, costs are up. In the past five years, the median home sale price in Tyler has increased 37% from $229,000 to $315,000. That's a difference in yearly mortgage rates of about $7,000 at today's rates. In most regards, that's pretty awesome. Like, Tyler is growing. It's fantastic. I remember sitting here, I'm interviewed with the city manager who was here in 2005 as part of a school project, and they were like, hey, we're going to hit 100,000 people. We've got it. We kept going. And so that's great to see people that want to be in our parks, they want to use our great hospitals, they love our community values. And so those changes that I'm advocating for today are four simple ones. One is to allow accessory dwelling units by right, whether that's, hey, mom needs to move in with us and she wants to keep her own space, or the kids want to move into a garage apartment when they go to UT Tyler. It gives everybody a little bit more independence and lets property owners increase that density. Allow by right duplexes, triplexes, quadplexes in any residential zoning area. That increases our general density. Whenever that house has been torn down on a corner lot, it lets somebody go in and put two back in, maybe the same square footage even, but increases the actual amount of density that we have without needing months of new zoning meetings and red tape to cut through. Decrease the minimum lot size by, or to 1,400 square feet. That's one of the key factors that has kept Houston more affordable than the other major cities in Texas. Based on a study in 2023, it's $18,000 lower average house price in Houston than it would be otherwise. And then legalize apartments and mixed-use buildings in all commercial zones. That lets people live near the amenities, it cuts down on traffic, which is Tyler's probably favorite complaint that I've seen. It doesn't bother me too much coming from bigger cities, but it's definitely nice whenever there's a little less traffic on the road. These are simple changes that Tyler can make to ensure that while we grow, our residents can afford to live here and thrive. They're bipartisan initiatives that have helped red states like Montana and blue cities like Minneapolis keep their costs in line, and they are a great alternative to California's style of zoning that we now have that makes prices increase ever upwards and cost all of us a little more. So definitely appreciate y'all taking the time to listen, and my advice would be to say, build, baby build, let's get some houses here.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Williams. That's only two cards I have. Are there other people in the crowd that wish to come up and speak to? Mr. Davis, you can speak during the budget, or you can speak, you signed up for M1. Either one of you, you're good either way, if you're talking about Gladys.
No, I'm not talking about Gladys.
Why don't you come on up while we're doing the budget? It's just more, but kind of keep it on, you know, keep it on topic.
No, I'm not. I know we're on the budget.
You state your name and address for the record, please.
I am Darrell L. Davis, Tyler, Texas, 2719 Plaza Avenue, 75702. Thank you, Mayor, Councilmember, attorney, Senator, and the people that's gathering. On August the 12th, I brought a package up here. It was file stamped, and each and every one of y'all should have had, got a copy of it. But if you didn't, I would like to hand it out so y'all can review. When I was here on the 14th, they spoke on a $1.3 million facility, a police training facility. I opposed that, but what I want the people here to know, I don't oppose police, and I'm not for defunding the police. But I do want police to have adequate training. At 5:50 in the afternoon on July, I believe it was the 14th of 2023, I was rolling down South Broadway in my F-150, and I had my 16-foot trailer behind me. My lights worked, but my brake lights and my turn signal lights don't work, so I was using the hand signals. I was going south on Broadway. I hadn't quite made it to Amherst. Cop was coming north, and it hadn't quite made to Amherst, but when it did, it had already spotted me in my trailer. So before I get to Amherst, they U-turned, whipped around, and followed me to Broadway. They stopped me. Cutting the story short, this officer gave me a ticket for using hand signals, saying that I still have to have functioning taillights to use hand signals. That's what hand signals for, is malfunctioning taillights. The ticket is there to prove it. I had an accident where a police wrote the wrong narrative and caused me, the city attorney noticed real, she promised to fix it for me, it never did. I still had got my vehicle fixed from there, and that happened.
Can you please stick to this budget?
Well, Matt said you talked to him.
No, sir.
We've got to stick to the budget.
You still have to stick to the budget.
What the budget is, is that we need functioning police officers. I stand here in the shirt that says hashtag justice for Darrell L. Davis because I was stopped and accused of eating crack.
Budget.
The budget, okay, back into the budget. This needs to be dealt with before we start handing out monies for facilities that we're not even using the ones that we have now. And if anybody has any questions about those documents or what's alleged, you know, they are factual documents because they are the city of Tyler documents. And that goes to show that the police is not being trained adequate now, that they don't even know their own policies to write them in a ticket for using hand signals.
Did you hear that?
And want to give them $1.3 million.
Did you hear that noise?
That's me and my timer. But you didn't say that when the other guy was speaking. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, is there anyone else here that wishes to speak? P1.
I'd just like to comment on Mr. Davis advocating for increased training, which we've put into the budget by putting the new National Guard Center into our training, and we're going to have that training in the budget. And that's what he's looking for.
And the Tyler Police Department is one of the few departments, I think it's like the top 3% of the nation in relationship to training and certification. So Tyler PD is, I mean, they've received quite a bit of training, and just as far as, like I said, through the Kalia certification process, which is a very strenuous process that has to get updated routinely, they have shown merit with that.
So continued investment in training is a good thing.
All right, anyone else here to speak? Mr. Brewer, run up. Name an address for the record. I think you know the drill.
That actually makes a good point about the doxing. It's Bob Brewer, 1800 D. Charles, Tyler, Texas. And my concern about police training and the money we spend on police, and this may be hearsay, I've heard it on Facebook, that one guy was accused of doxing a commissioner with a third-degree felony. So since, this is budget. So part of our budget and part of our training, I would like to, since Constitution Week's coming up, September 17th, we are just devoid of any understanding of our law as written, and we need to make training on our laws as Gorsuch is trying to swing the entirety of the United States back into understanding the Constitution and the laws that we swear an oath to and don't know. So anyway, I just would like to have our budget, and if we're really keen on training for all of us to get trained on what our founders gave us the opportunity to know. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brewer. All right, anybody else? All right. Seeing no one getting up, we will now close the public hearing, and we'll move to item P1, Darren.
Good morning, Darren Jennings, City Engineer. Here to give you just a brief overview of what the annual work plan is that we created for the Half-Cent Sales Tax Fund. First, what I would like to do is just go over what the annual work plan process is. The annual work plan is just a list of all the projects that are reviewed and set forth for the Half-Cent Sales Tax. They're just capital approval projects that we need to do.
Sorry, bud.
Is the presentation working? No, keep going. So, there we go. That looks a lot better. Much better. So basically, in April, every year in April, we have a call for projects. Anybody can submit projects over the internet. We have an actual open house. We had it this year at the Rose Garden. One of the rooms out there, where the public can come in, the city employees can come in, departments can come in, even engineering submitted projects during this time. And then we have a close, at the end, staff reviews all the new projects for the information submitted, if it's incomplete and all that. And then in June and July this year, we have a scoring prioritization committee meeting, which scores the projects, ranks them, prioritizes them, and then a city leadership review of those projects. And then in August, just two weeks ago, we submitted it to Half-Cent Sales Tax Board for review, and they approved it. What they also did was, as part of the approval, they submitted, we had a public hearing to start this process. We are required to have a 60-day presentation, a public comment period as part of this. That's the bottom one. It will end on October 20th. So where we are right now is the 28th, presenting it to the council. So just a really brief overview. What we did this year, actually, starting last year, we did, we have some existing projects here, is, these are all projects, you can see even Cambridge is still on there, Stagecoach and Thompson. Some of these, as a time of this writing or preparation, were actually still in progress somehow. We had not had a reconciliation change order, but as you can see, there are quite a few projects in here, about $34 million total in active projects that are just one-time projects. And we have another recurring project, takes it up to about $40 million. Watch to see the railroad crossing improvements and things, other projects like that. Now, I do want to, we're always looking for projects. We're always looking and reevaluating projects. I want to, we actually took a couple of projects and postponed them for the airport projects because they were, one of them was postponed to 2028, so we took it out of the Tier One projects. And then we have three street projects that were taken off. Basically, the New Copland Road Additional Turn Lane and the Neighborhood Connections, both of those increased each by a half a million dollars. So we had a million-dollar increase, and then it was just the cost of the benefit. They were deemed, even by, approved by the Half-Cent, that they were just deemed it was just too expensive now with the increasing costs. And the railroad inventory, the NPO decided to do that, so that saved us money on there. Saved us about $150,000 there. All in all, we saved about $5.6 million by doing this. Again, we're always looking for ways to stretch the dollars, stretch the Half-Cent funds. Saved us about $150,000 there. All in all, we saved about $5.6 million by doing this. Again, we're always looking for ways to stretch the dollars, stretch the half-cent funds. So I want to look at Tier 1 projects. I just want to kind of show you, like, the top one there, runway lighting, that's a FAA grant. It's a 90-10 project. We only pay 10%, we get a 90% grant on that. And again, this is a Tier 1 project. As I said earlier, we went to a tier project way of ranking them. Tier 1 means it's the highest priority. And all we did, instead of giving this as a 91.2 or 96.1, we just gave them, these are the top priority projects in Tier 1, and the intention here is to fund them in '24, '25 fiscal year. Tier 2 will be the next two-year fiscal years after that. So, and then Tier 3 and 4 down there beyond that. So, but I wanted you to see the projects that are in Tier 1. You'll notice that Fire Station Number 2, Demo and Reconstruction is in there, Legacy Trail Phase 3 is in here. So, and here are some new projects. Those are the existing here, the new, the Downing Street Overflow Channel has been moved to the General Fund, so we were able to save $175,000 from there. The relocation of the Air Traffic Control Tower, that's actually a $20 million project of which we're paying 10% on the dollar. The New Copeland Road PHB, you're probably wondering what PHB means, Pedestrian Hybrid Beacon. It's a pedestrian signal. We have one over there at UT Tyler across the road from the apartments. So I want to do, highlight a couple of these projects, there's a few of these. Fire Station Number 2, we've worked with Cobal on this, starting the design, at least getting all the paperwork ready. Now, this does involve the relocation, excuse me, the reconstruction and demolition of the existing fire station right there around the mall, just kind of the southeast, southwest corner of the mall. And it'll be a one-year build. We're replacing it with a little bit larger station to house the nine full-time employees there with the $16,000. All we could do that is a two-story. And you can see, read some of the details about that, but I want to go ahead and go on to the next one I wanted to highlight, which is the police training facility. What I wanted to highlight, this is the old facility out there that the city owns, and what we're doing is, we actually have about a $1.5 million in there, just to have a little bit of buffer in this $1.3 million project. So, but it is a development of this property that will reuse the city's property and reuse a building. Now, the good thing about this one is we had $1.5 million that was able to be removed from the police and fire training facility, which was a current project. We separated those out, and so there's no increase in funds required for this project. Then a couple of other projects I want to highlight, a grant application contingency fund. There are a lot of grant funds out there that are available. We just don't know about them all necessarily, or we don't have the staffing to be able to go after them. So we're always looking for ways, again, to look and extend and stretch half-cent funds. So what this is, it's just some money out there where the applications can be relatively onerous. It could be 10, 15, 25, sometimes up to $50,000 just to be able to, the effort to get the application prepared. All this does is, we can hopefully recover that money in the grant itself and the project. This just allows me to pay a consultant upfront to be able to go after the money and be able to find 90, 10, 80, 20 grant projects funding. And then TW consent decree, street gap improvements, that sounds kind of interesting. But what it is, is TW consent decree is going down roads, and they're going to touch probably 2/3 to 3/4, maybe like 25 feet with their trench, but it's a 31-foot road. So what this is, is they're going to fix what they tear up, but what I would like to do is either fix the rest of it and make it maybe even overlay it, kind of like we did on Shiloh. With Shiloh, we fixed the eastbound lanes there between Paluxi and Old Troop, and then what we were doing is, we went back there and overlaid the whole thing, so it's all one contiguous new stretch of road. That's the intention of this project here. Again, looking for ways to stretch money. So I want to do now is go into the Tier 2 projects. You'll see the Fire Station Number 2 construction is in this one. So that's what this is for. A lot of these projects are multi-year projects, designed one year and then construction the next. And there's where we have the fire training facility here on this one. So that's a Tier 2, which is be the next two years, be in that. And those are existing projects that have been on there. These are new ones that were added this year, the Ninth Street drainage improvements. We do have a building that is being inundated with some floodwaters coming across there. We have three projects here that are recommended in the South Tyler Mobility Study. So there's intersection improvements that will help traffic flow at those intersections and move that along much faster. And then we also have the Tier 3, which is further out than three years, which, because we reevaluate all these every three years, priorities change and we get new projects. So you can see the new projects, the tier ones that have been in there, and these were the new ones that were added this year. So again, about $36 million. You'll see a lot of projects in here in Tier 4. And not to say that Tier 3 and Tier 4 cannot get funded sooner, but they are just further, they are just lower priority at the time based on all the projects we have. And I wanted to end it with the new projects here. You'll notice Cumberland Road Extension, that will be a developer-driven project. And I want to end it right here. These are all the new projects. We had about $40 million worth of new projects this year that are identified. So any questions?
Any questions for Darren? All right, thank you for the presentation.
Thank you.
R. 1, Chief Cobal.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. I'm here with a request that the City Council consider adopting a resolution authorizing submission of an application by the Tyler Fire Department for an acceptance of grant funding, grant funding from the Ben &amp; May T. Fish Foundation to be used to support the Tyler Fire Department Public Safety Bomb Team aimed at maintaining and enhancing the City of Tyler's emergency preparedness and response capabilities. We started our ELD team about six years ago, where we started the research. You guys are well aware that FBI gave us certification at the end of 2020. In order for us to get started, we needed a large robot to be part of our team. We borrowed one from Mesquite. They gave us, they let us use their backup, so we're still using that now. With this grant, we would be able to purchase our own large robot. The request here is, this is a non-matching grant, up to $450,000. We do have an estimate for about $318,000 from one vendor already. So it is recommended that the City Council consider adopting a resolution authorizing submission of an application by the Tyler Fire Department for an acceptance of grant funding through the Ben &amp; May T. Fish Foundation of Tyler, Texas, in the amount up to $450,000 to be used to support the Tyler Fire Department Bomb Team aimed at maintaining and enhancing the city's emergency preparedness and response capabilities. Any questions?
Any questions for the chief?
Moved to approve.
Second. I didn't get to make a comment yet. Okay, we got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? I'll say this. Thank you for what you're doing. You know, when you think about, you know, with Chief Tyler and Chief Cobal, and just like Ed was saying, we got, we're doing good. You know, when you think about the ISO rating being a 1, and the Tyler Fire Department is in the top, correct me if I'm wrong, the Tyler Fire Department is in the top 1% of fire departments in the entire United States. It's because of the action that you guys take, and so, thank you.
You're welcome.
I'd like to comment. Do not make a motion. I think, too, with all this that we're implementing, it affects the insurance rates for the average homeowners, too. Does it help us with our insurance rates being a little bit lower if we have these type of ratings?
It does.
So it's a good investment for the community as a whole.
Absolutely.
All right, we got a motion, and we got a second, and a third discussion. Move. All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thanks, chief. Kedry.
All right, Mayor and Council, you have item M. 1 before you. It's a request that City Council consider reviewing and accepting revenue expenditure report for the period ending June 30th, 2024. These funds in the packet that you have represent about 70% of our appropriations. The other 30% include debt service funds, capital project funds, and some internal service funds. The report compares year-to-date actuals this year to the same period last year, and also compares our forecast to the budget as well. And we'll just kind of hit some of the overall highlights, and if you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer those. General Fund, we're expecting revenues to be about $983,000 less than budget. That's due to a downturn in sales tax. Also, we're expecting expenditures to be a little over $2 million less than budget. We, if you remember early in the fiscal year, we asked departments to go back, look at their budgets, and give us a little over a 2% cut, and so they achieved that, and we're just a little short shy of that. They actually got, I think we asked for 2.5, and they hit 2.4, but we're definitely offsetting the revenue that we lost, so we appreciate the departments doing that for Utility Fund, we're expecting revenues to be about $983,000 less than budget. Also, they were able to come in under budget, a little over $2 million on expenditures. I'm sorry, a little over 2.8 million. Actually, let me back up here.
Yeah, you have to get to the general fund.
Yeah, so utilities, we're expecting revenues to be about $480,000 less than budget, and we're expecting expenditures to be about 2.8 million less than budget. Okay, solid waste. We're expecting revenues to be about $421,000 less than budget. Some of that was due to a delay in implementing a 5% CPI increase that you all approved last year, but that is implemented at this point. Also, we're expecting expenditures to be about $209,000 greater than budget. Airport Fund, we're expecting revenues to be about $246,000 less than budget. And we're expecting expenditures to be about $139,000 less than budget. Development Services, we're expecting revenues to be about $153,000 more than budget and expenditures to be about $161,000 less than budget. Hot Fund, we've seen a little bit of slowdown in the revenue in the Hot Fund, but we're still pretty close to budget. We're looking at about $95,000 less than budget on revenues and about $15,000 less than budget on expenditures. Also, and I'll kind of knock on wood here, our Employee Benefits Fund, revenues are about $157,000 greater than budget, but we're pleased to see that expenditures appear that they're going to be about $900,000 less than budget. So that's all I'm knocking on wood here. And so this concludes my report. I request that City Council take action to review and consider and accept the revenue expenditure report for the period ending June 30th, 2024. Thanks.
Any questions for Kedry?
Can we make a motion now? We're ready.
Moved to approve.
Second.
All right.
Thank you.
Got a motion by Dick, or second by Haney. They're both kind of be funny. All those in favor say aye. Opposed?
Set himself up.
Thanks, Kedry. Tiffany.
Good morning. Tiffany Curry, Tyler Water Utilities.
Good morning.
I am going to present items M. 2 and M. 3. Item M. 2 is an engineering services agreement with Langen Engineering for the Group 3 Private Lateral Repair Program. Just a quick definition of private lateral. It's the pipe that connects a citizen's home or business to the City of Tyler Sanitary Sewer Collection System. The private property owner is responsible for the maintenance of the private lateral. Defects in the private lateral system can cause very significant inflow and infiltration into our sewer, sanitary sewer system, which reduces our capacity and can result in sanitary sewer overflows. So as a result of that, we have decided to implement the private lateral repair program. Even though this is, these are private laterals, the city is choosing to implement this repair program in order to reduce our INI. We've had three condition assessments so far that pipeline analysis has completed for us, one in 2019, one in 2022, and one in 2023. Our current Group 3 package will be designed by Langen Engineering, and it includes due diligence, project communication, data review, design plans, and they will assist us with construction administration. The total amount of the contract is $200,000, and we expect design to be completed near the beginning of 2025. My request today is that the City Council consider authorizing the city manager to execute a contract with Langen Engineering in the amount of $200,000 for the private lateral repair program.
Any questions for Tiffany?
Moved to approve.
Second.
Got a motion by Wynn, second by Hawkins. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thanks, Tiffany.
Okay. Item M. 3 is a change order, two change orders, 1 and 2, with SAC Construction for the Black Fort Creek Outfall Sewer Cast-in-Place CIPP project. This project was awarded in July of '21 to SAC Construction for approximately 18,600 linear feet of 54-inch gravity sewer remediation via CIPP. There were also some manhole repairs and quite a bit of access roads constructed throughout the system as a part of this project. The original contract amount was $11,972,921. These two change orders, the first one, just a few miscellaneous changes throughout the field, field conditions that needed to be adjusted in the amount of $38,118.36. The second change order is for additional CIPP remedial work that was identified as a part of our Group 6 inspections. It's approximately 7,600 linear feet of 6-inch to 15-inch sanitary sewer line that will be remediated. This will include some right-of-way clearing, some access roads, for a total of $2118,850.73. That will bring the contract amount to $14,129,890.09. My request today is that the City Council consider authorizing the city manager to approve Change Orders 1 and 2 with SAC Construction that will increase the contract amount by $2156,969.09 for the Black Fort Creek Outfall Sewer CIPP project.
Any questions, Tiffany?
Moved to approve.
Second.
Now it's a game. Got a motion by Dick, or second by Haney. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thanks, Tiffany. All right, now we're done with the exciting stuff. Not that yours wasn't.
Good morning, Council and Mayor.
Good morning.
We are excited to bring this project back before you. As discussed in previous City Council meetings, the Miracle League of Tyler approached the par-. the Miracle League of Tyler approached the Parks Department years ago in hopes to build an all-inclusive Miracle League Ball Field at Faulkner Park. The Miracle League of Tyler's vision is to make everything accessible from the dugouts to the fields. They want families to enjoy cheering on their favorite athlete. The surface is a specialized rubberized surface that makes for smooth sailing in a wheelchair and also helps prevent injury in case of a fall. It's more than just playing a game. The Miracle League is about making new friends for the players and the families, building self-esteem and being treated with dignity. Everyone involved in this project is very excited to see it come to life and we are thrilled to partner with the Miracle League of Tyler on this very special project. This project was taken before the Parks Board and the Board unanimously recommended this project. The Miracle League of Tyler has raised majority of the funding for the field at a little over one point one million dollars and half-cent sales tax will be providing five hundred thousand dollars. Today, I'm here to request the City Council. My bad. Today, I'm here to request that the City Council consider accepting the donation from the Miracle League of Tyler in the amount of one million one hundred and sixty-four thousand one hundred and forty-one dollars and forty-four cents to help complete the construction of the Miracle League Field at Faulkner Park. And we do have representatives from the Miracle League of Tyler in attendance if there are any questions or comments for them as well.
Thanks, Leanne. Shannon, I've, I gotta do it. I know you're not signed up to speak, but can you just come up and just talk, just come up and talk about Jack and, and kind of the creation of this and how it started and... This is the main fundraiser right here.
I also have Kevin Kirk, C.R. Treasurer, and Jason Trimble. So they are the brains behind it. I just ask for money, Don. I'm the fundraiser. But, so several years ago, a family, Casey Brians, who's the actual president of the Miracle League, had to travel to Longview for their son, Jack, who had a mitochondrial disease and is in a wheelchair, to play baseball. If you have been, there are, to a Miracle League park, one is in Longview, but there are over three hundred and fifty in the nation. So this is not, we're not coming up with a new creative idea, but there's not one in Smith County, sadly to say. And what that park is, it's beautiful. I have, I've joked with the city that it will be on the cover of every magazine because it is rubber customized surface, so it's safe, but it doesn't fade like all the other ball parks in town will with their natural grass. But as you can imagine, in a wheelchair, going across dirt is quite cumbersome. And I had an interesting meeting with someone who worked with a Challenger League that locally, we have some kids playing in the, in the east. And the very first Challenger League game, they had gathered some kids together. Their parents were very nervous to do this. And, and this was years and years ago in Tyler. And the very first play, the child rounded first base, had a buddy, and actually fell out of his wheelchair. And so that was the, the person that had started that thought, well, this is the end of that idea. This, this won't work. It, it continued to work because the families in our, in Smith County need a place right now to cheer on their kids and to support their kids. These, these miracle fields are amazing. When you go to them, you don't just see the, the athlete. You see a buddy. You see their family, their friends, their classmates, because this is, this is their thing. These kids have gone and supported their siblings in, in games, and that's where Jack Brians, so he was the fourth child. He had gone to all of his siblings' sporting events over the years and been to many baseball games out at Faulkner Park, watching his brothers play, but never had the opportunity to play. They found a Miracle League in Longview and they drove every week with a child who was in a wheelchair to get the opportunity to do this. And then Casey came to me and said, well, that's silly. Why, why would we be driving to Gregg County? Smith County needs this. And so that's really where the idea came in, was from Casey and from Jack. Jack has since passed away, so it makes me sad. He won't be our very first player. That was always my dream. And I will be honest that, that's why I said yes. But now my heart has just expanded that my yes is for all of our community. And I'm so thrilled for this project. I will say though, with the one point one, over a million dollars, I'm trying to look at the number, but the, that amount has been raised by our community. And it was the easiest, I fundraised a lot for nonprofits in Tyler. It was the easiest thing I've ever done. When we went in, the yeses are so fast and people want to be a part of it. And I'm so proud to be a part of a community that says yes like that. So just a thank you to those, those donors that allowed us to have the opportunity to then get to come and say, hey, if we can give this much, can you help us out at the end? But yeah, Tyler has done, Tyler and Smith County have done an amazing job of supporting us and I can't wait to play ball.
Well, thank you, Shannon. And thank you for, I can't see the, Jase, there he is. Thank you guys for what you're doing. I gotta applaud this. I guess we should have voted first. All right, I want a motion on M. Four.
Move to approve.
Second.
Got a motion by Haney, second by Wynn. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. M. Five.
Move to approve.
You got the stinker.
So staying on the subject of the Miracle League Ball Field, on April tenth, the City Council awarded the Harris Craig Architect a contract to complete the design, bid phase, and all necessary bid documents. The project will include an all-inclusive field and complex equipped with bleachers, a concession stand, and restrooms. The city put a notice out to bidders for the construction of the field on June nineteenth and June twenty-sixth. Bids were opened on July twenty-third, twenty twenty-four. We received bids from five contractors with SCI Construction coming in at the lowest bid at one million six hundred and eighty thousand three hundred and fifty-eight dollars. This project was included in the half-cent sales tax annual work plan. And on the February ninth, twenty twenty-four meeting, the Half-Cent Sales Tax Board passed a resolution approving a five hundred thousand dollars in funding for this project. The city will oversee the construction and be the project manager while working closely with the Miracle League of Tyler. The Miracle League has agreed to continue to fundraise for any other expenses that may arise during the construction process. So today, I'm here to request that the City Council consider authorizing the city manager to execute a contract with SCI Construction for the Miracle League of Tyler Ball Field at Faulkner Park in the amount of one million six hundred and eighty thousand three hundred and fifty-eight dollars.
Any questions for Leanne?
Move to approve.
Second.
Got a motion by Nickle, second by Haney. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Good luck with your project. Kate? Beat that.
Good morning.
Poor Kate. This is exciting, though. Water tower rehab? Yeah, now we talk about a water tower.
This is exciting stuff.
It's more visible.
Yeah.
Makes the water flow.
Well, good morning, Mayor and Council. I'm here to present on item M. Six, which is a construction award of a contract for the West Second Street Elevated Storage Tank Rehabilitation. So the West, West Second Street Elevated Storage Tank is located on West Second Street and Butler. So kind of near West Second and Lyons, if you know that area. The scope of this project is to sandblast and repaint the exterior and the interior and put the City of Tyler logo on the exterior. It includes a tank mixer, access improvements and steel repairs, replacing the altitude valve and some minor yard piping improvements. So sealed bids were open and read aloud on July twenty-third, twenty twenty-four. We received a total of seven bids. The low bidder is Tanksco with a bid of one million five hundred and nine thousand, five hundred and one thousand nine hundred and twenty dollars. So I'm here to request that the City Council authorize the city manager to execute a capital improvements project contract in the amount of one million five hundred and one thousand nine hundred and twenty dollars with Tanksco, Inc. for the West Second Street Elevated Storage Tank Rehabilitation and adopt a resolution reserving the right to reimburse expenditure, expenditures for proceeds of future debt.
Any questions for Kate?
Move to approve.
Second. Got a motion by Hawkins, second by Nichols. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
All right, we've, we've pulled M. Seven, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right, we're down to the consent agenda. Anything need to be pulled or approved as presented?
Move to approve as presented.
Got a motion by Wynn, second by Haney. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Opposed? Motion carries. City Manager, report.
Mayor and Council, a couple of different items. The first of which is Keep Tyler Beautiful is continuing to move forward with the Beauty in the Box Program with seven new boxes soon to be wrapped. They're also working on promoting the recycling center and designing new information magnets for the self-service drop-off. So they've helped take on the issues that we've had with recycling due to the Rivers Recycling Facility being out of commission. And we're very proud of our Keep Tyler Beautiful Board for taking on that task. Couple of different things related to just other capital projects going on. For legacy trail construction, y'all may have, you may see on one fifty-five, some of the work that's happening over there where Stewart Park Trailhead will be located at. The majority of the work offered, the trail construction, is complete with the exception of that trailhead. There's still some striping and cleanup that needs to occur along the remainder of the trail. However, the trail is in place as well as signage. We're going, planning on kind of a big grand opening of that towards the end of this calendar year. Also, over on Gentry Corridor, you may have seen some improvements there, especially at Gentry Corridor, Martin Luther King, and there on, at Glenwood. And what this is, is our Gentry Corridor improvements related to federal, or to hot text stock grants that we've received. So curb ramps and sidewalk improvements were recently installed at those intersections. Also, signal poles, conduit wiring, electrical service, new signal cabinets, and some signal heads have been placed at Gentry Parkway and Glenwood Boulevard. That's ones where it kind of helps with traffic, especially there at that intersection and especially the pedestrian traffic that's trying to cross. Eventually, improvements will include the curb extensions to reduce pedestrian crossing distances and improve intersection safety of this location. So we're proud of that work that you may have seen as you drive through that area. And that's all I had, sir.
All right, any comments or questions for City Manager? All right, we're going to go into executive session. As allowed by Detective Civil Business Law, Chapter five five one of the Government Code, City of Council may go into executive session to consider the following. Texas Government Code, Section five five one point zero seven one, litigation to deliver a pending or contemplated litigation or settlement offer involving Lofton W. Woods, Jr. versus the City of Tyler lawsuit, cause twenty-three, two eight, four two, A. A good enough? Any final actions to be taken by City Council will be taken in an open session. All right, we'll be back.
Bob. Stay. Bob, I like the hat, man. Well, you know, I've gotten to wear, I'm licensed. When you get old, you get licensed.
Yeah, I wouldn't know.
All right, are we on the air?
Yes.
Okay, here we go. All right, we are back from executive session and we do have an action item as follows.
A move to approve the settlement agreement for the Lofton W. Woods, Jr. versus City of Tyler lawsuit, cause number twenty-three dash two eight four two dash A, in the amount of twenty-five thousand dollars.
Second. Who got it?
Wynn.
Wynn, okay. Got a motion by Haney, second by Wynn. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. How I entertain a motion to adjourn?
It's moved.
All right, we are adjourned.